Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order for open session now on October 14, 2025 at 6:11. And tonight, we have Vanessa Australia going to lead us in our pledge.
If I may have you all stand, please, with your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vanessa. All right. Tonight, the board took action on a vote from a 4-0 to approve a settlement agreement between Fullerton School District and employee number 7617. That's a report from closed session. I wanted to take a brief moment right now, and we've got a full house tonight. So before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd just like to take a moment to recognize and honor those who have lost their lives in acts of violence, including gun violence and school shootings, which deeply affect families and communities across our nation. We also pause to remember individuals such as Charlie Kirk, who tragically lost his life and has been awarded the Medal of Honor or Medal of Freedom, and to acknowledge that today would have been George Floyd's birthday, another life lost to violence, whose passing reminds us of the importance of compassion, understanding, and unity. At this time, I invite everyone to join me in a moment of silence to reflect, honor the lives lost, and reaffirm our shared commitment to fostering peace and safety in our communities. Thank you. Now, we'll get started. So this evening, we've got a full house and we have a full agenda. So we normally start with our reports from all of our people. So we are going to start our meeting this evening with our reports from our superintendent. We'll start.
Well, first, I want to take a moment. We do have a kind of a cute video that was produced and created to encourage people to give input on the LCAP.
My voice is important.
My voice is important.
And your voice is important. Did you know that you can influence what the Fullerton School District does for kids like me?
How?
Through the LCAP. The LCAP stands for Local Control Accountability Plan, which is a collaborative process for how FSD can accomplish goals and improve outcomes for students.
Tell me more.
A big part of that process is the input that you provide as a community member. You'll be receiving a survey through text message or email called FSD LCAP Survey. When you take the time to complete it, you're using your voice to tell FSD what you think about our district's work with programs, facilities, nutrition, after-school classes, and a lot more.
It's important for my future.
And my future, too. Speak up, FSD.
So just to encourage people, be part of the LCAP process. Give your input on those program services that you want to see in the future. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. That was wonderful. You know what? That's why we're here, you guys. Remember that. Okay, information from our Board of Trustees. So we will go ahead and we'll start with James Sissi.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for being here. Over the past, since the last meeting, I got to sites in my trustee area. In one site in particular, outside of my trustee area, I went to go visit some special education classes at Commonwealth. I had the privilege of doing so. And I bring that up because, well, recently, or soon, we're going to have the, I think, 50th anniversary of the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act. So prior to this federal law, schools could just turn people with disabilities away, saying, no, it's too hard, or too weird, or I don't like it. It's going to make me feel uncomfortable. I just can't handle it. And they would make up a bunch of reasons to turn people away with disabilities. But once IDA passed, it guaranteed a right for everyone to have a right to a public education, a quality public education. And so I'm discouraged by the Department of Education firings recently, which they laid off all the people that would provide oversight over special education. I have faith in the process of our district. I know the people that work in special education in our district, and I know that they're good faith partners with parents, that sometimes that relationship can be contentious. But at the end of the day, all parties want what's best for their kids. Disabilities are no. And so I just want to talk about that and raise that Fullerton School District remains dedicated to providing a quality public education to every single child, regardless of disability status or not. And that even though people are at the federal level are being laid off, we will still be good faith partners to the families impacted. So, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, in the last month, I've got to attend a lot of fun FSD events, including a playground opening at Pacific Drive to celebrate with the kids there. I got to go join the Walk to School event at Raymond, celebrate our custodians, and appreciate them last week for all the hard work that they put in every single day. I got a chance to meet with our CSEA leadership, as well as our FETA president. And among other things, we talked about their essential voice, and especially this process as we select a new superintendent, and just making sure that we are absolutely listening to and providing significant opportunities for all of our staff and community to feed into that process and listening. I was able to attend a summit on immigration that was hosted by the OC Office of Immigrant and Refugees Affairs. We heard there about some updates, especially on recent laws that are designed to protect our students and draw more layers of accountability for schools as we protect our kids on campus especially, including were highlighted. And as I know, our staff are now working on looking at how we are implementing AB49, which in California means that we will restrict federal immigration enforcement officers from entering school grounds without valid judicial warrant, as well as SB98 that requires all K through 12 schools and higher ed to immediately notify campus communities if immigration officers are on campus. Now, I think we are doing a lot to already comply with these, but it's nice to know that all schools will have this opportunity to protect our kids. And I think there's more. We're just looking into how we can continue to not just comply, but really do the very best we can for our community and our kids. I also got to attend an event. It's called the Public School Defenders Hub Event. And I was encouraged because I was reminded of the fact that public education is a public good, and it is still the best tool for democracy, inclusion, liberation, and the elimination of poverty and inequality. And just thinking about how education should set us free from the ignorance of being trapped into thinking that the only way to do things is what we've seen and experienced, but opening our eyes to new ways of seeing the world. And I think that ongoing efforts to discredit public education, to disparage it as failing or places of indoctrination, they are part of a strategy aimed at defunding and privatizing public education, and oftentimes for economic and political purposes. But our schools are not failing. In fact, we see that they are absolutely thriving. We look at FSDs. I mean, this week, we had so many things to celebrate from some of our highest scores ever on the state standardized tests, to schools being awarded incredible awards, not just for the ways that we're closing academic achievement gaps, but really the way we're supporting holistic well-being of kids and innovative approaches to arts and technology and academics and whole children's well-being. So I'm encouraged when I look at FSD and that work. But like James, our trustee Cho, I also was very disturbed this week to see that the elimination of staff from the federal level that was, that is focused on IDA and the department, which managed the $15 billion that are awarded for special education from the federal level. This is money and expertise that our students depend on, our district depends on. And while we don't know exactly how that's going to be worked out, I think it's important that we continue to raise our voices to let federal workers know and our representatives at the federal level know how critical this money is and how critical it is for oversight and expertise to be given to it to ensure that it's used appropriately and that every single child still has that, their right to a quality public education respected. So we need to continue to tell the good story of public education and the important role that public education plays in teaching us how to live with one another and to keep continuing the good work of democracy.
Hello, everyone. Welcome. I see a lot of, a lot of new and old faces in here today.
Not old, but just, you know.
Not old in that sense. You're all young to me. You're all 21, yeah, legal? I want to start out by saying that yesterday was Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I want to wish a joyful and respectful celebration to all of our Indigenous brothers and sisters, including my husband and daughters, who are registered Pasquayaki American Indians. So whoever else is in here that is American Indian, Felicidades. Congratulations. Over the last few weeks, I've had the privilege of representing our district at several wonderful events. We attended, we all attended the tiny home number three groundbreaking and the new arc ribbon cutting ceremony at Nicholas Junior High, both inspiring celebrations of collaboration and the district coming together for Measure N, and to have a brand-new gymnasium at Nicholas. So exciting. And of course, being able to share that moment with our missing trustee, Arunita Core. I believe that was his last event with us. We're going to miss him. At Richmond, I joined their very first-ever Walk to School Day. It was very nice to have our Olivia join us for Safety to Schools, and also participated in Raymond's Elementary Walk to School Day. It's been something that, a tradition that began with my now 14-year-old, which now I get to do with my fourth grader at Raymond as well. But it was extra special because this time around, Assemblywoman Sharon Cork Silva was able to join us, and so she was able to walk with us and be a part of, her and her husband, Jesús Silva, who's also an FSD teacher, were able to join us. That was extra sweet. I attended the Woodcrest Elementary PTA Breakfast. Oh, my God, those pancakes were delicious. They were generously donated by IHOP. So for those of you who like IHOP pancakes, those were a treat. Coffee. And so I just want to thank the PTA for all their hard work and all the community for coming together and all the amazing work that they did that day. And lastly, I just, I want to share a highlight, not necessarily from the district, but from a recent trip to Washington, DC, that I attended through our family business, El Pachuco Zoot Suits, for those of you who don't know, on Harvard Boulevard. My daughter and I were actually invited to attend an exhibit at the Anaheim, at the Anaheim, why am I saying Anaheim? At the Smithsonian National Museum of American History, because one of the zoot suits that we created is actually part of an exhibit called Corazon y Vida, Lord Rider Exhibit. Right now, the Smithsonians are closed, so you can't go see them. But as soon as they open, I encourage you to go see it. You know, doing, my daughter and I doing our trip out there was also a way for me to be able to take her to the monuments and have her learn, you know, about the different histories. So visit different Smithsonians. For those of you who know, there's about 11 of them. We were able to go to the American Indian Museum, the African-American Museum. She insisted on going to the Holocaust Museum because, you know, it was a teaching history for her, because she's read different books. And so she's learned about the different things that have happened here in the United States and outside, both the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I think it's important that we have our kids grow up with the understanding of history and what's happened in the past so that we, as humans, as human beings, don't repeat, you know, the things that have happened that we don't want to repeat. And so, you know, as always, we just want to reaffirm that the Fullerton School District remains a safe, inclusive, and welcoming place for every single child and family. And our focus is, and always will be, on creating environments where every child feels respected, seen, and heard, because that is our number-one goal here, to make sure that every single child thrives with the help of our administrators and our staff. And so, thank you, everybody who is here today, and let's have a great meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for your reports. I just have a few things. As Ruthie had mentioned, we were able to get our California Assessment scores back. And I really wanted to take this time to thank our teachers, our administration, district staff, support staff, everybody who works with us, for us, for our children, including parents, right? So when our kids are taking those state tests and you're hearing it, you know, and you're, have them take peppermint today because they want to come in and do a good job, have them eat a breakfast. We, our children scored the highest they've scored. And so when you hear the bad news about schools and how bad schools are doing, just realize that, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't happen overnight, but years of constant, stable environment for our students, our teachers, the work that everyone does as a team in our district to really help our children move up to the next level is really paying off. So I just am so proud of the work that everyone has done. And kudos to Fullerton School District and everything that we are doing for our children to help them succeed. So I wanted to give a shout out for that. I'm going to give a plug for the, the city of Fullerton is starting a youth committee. And so they're interviewing right now seventh and eighth graders, as well as high schools for that committee. They will have a government day coming up. And then in addition to that, they're going to have a youth summit probably in the spring that will be open to all seventh and eighth graders. So keep an eye out for that, for parents and for students who are active in government. It's going to be a great way for them to be able to learn a little bit more. Give a shout out to our Champions Conference that's coming up this Saturday. Do we all know about that? Raise your hand if you know about it. Good, good. So we're having our block party this Saturday. You saw the LCAP video from one of our students. That's a way that parents can actively put input in and not have to fill out the survey. You can go around, you can, we're still doing that, right, where they can do input at the tables?
The tables of the Champions Conference.
A great way to build community and to bring our community together, as well as maybe make up some absences. But again, and for the first time this year, a cultural presentation. So we have presentations on different cultures, which will really be great for our students and our community to come together. So that's happening on Saturday. We, again, we have so many honor rolls, so many things are happening. We had our first special education parent group. We have a new group put together with our special education parents, who are working together to build community within that group. And they put on their first barbecue a couple weeks back. And thank you to our staff that walked alongside them and made that happen. What a great time for our students to feel included, for our parents to feel included, and for all of us to celebrate them. So thank you for that. Our D-LAC has been hard at work. Just the progress that that group has made over the many years has been phenomenal. Our parent leaders, who are stepping up and doing great things for kids, thank you very much. I want to give a shout out to Morningside, who did a food drive for us. So Morningside Retirement Community reached out to us and said, you know, we know that you guys are needing stuff. And so they did a food drive, which then started a ball rolling. Now, there's another group that's doing a food drive. So I am so proud to be in a community where we all come together for the sake of our children and our families, no matter what. We look after each other. So, so that's my report for this evening. So on that note, we will then move over to our D-LAC representative. Do we have someone from D-LAC to make a statement tonight?
President Berryman, I'll be reading on behalf of D-LAC tonight.
Nothing tonight? Oh, you're reading? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, President Berryman, School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Plucka, Executive Cabinet, and all families who are present and listening. My name is Myra Zamora, and I am the D-LAC chairperson. We want to thank Vista Elementary Principal Dr. Carolyn Llewellyn and all the parents for hosting our first D-LAC meeting. The school staff and parent volunteers welcomed us with hospitality and parting gifts. The Fullerton School District Nutrition Services Department presented what is being served for lunch to our students and offered delicious food samples. We look forward to seeing you at the Champions for Learning Block Party at Pacific Drive on Saturday, October 18. It will offer many resources for the community and gather input from parents for the LCAP. Our next D-LAC meeting will be at Acacia Elementary on Friday, November 14. We will continue with our wellness theme and have a presentation from the social, social-emotional learning team. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. All right, PTA. Is Joanne in here somewhere? Oh, there she is. So we, for those of you that have not come to a meeting before, we allow a lot of our organizations that are affiliated with us and that work with us to speak to the community and to the board each meeting.
Good evening, Dr. Plucka, President Berryman, and members of the board. My name is Joanne Cho. I'm the president of the Fullerton Council of PTAs. Each and every one of our 24 units has been busy with activities, movie nights, homecomings. Many of our schools are hosting upcoming Halloween-related trunk-or-treats or fall harvest festivals. Make sure you attend, and the schools would love your support. Membership campaigns are still going strong at each of our school sites. So far, we have a total of 3,674 members at all our sites. I'm still counting. All of our schools rely on the membership to make a positive difference in their students' lives. At the FSD school level, our units continue to support school programs, student activities, staff appreciation. So we encourage everyone to join multiple units. And as always, we say, every single membership counts. On September 23, Fullerton Council held its FCPTA Mentors Roundtable, a training for all PTA executive board members. It was great meeting with new and continuing leaders in our community to share ideas, ask questions, while providing participants with practical knowledge and resources to improve their PTAs. Thank you to everyone who was there. You made it great. Our Reflections Program entry deadline is rapidly approaching. It's this Friday, October 17, 2025. This is a nationwide PTA-run arts contest of various areas of visual arts, dance, music competition, film production, literature, and photography. The theme this year is I Belong. Fullerton Council will be hosting a PTA Reflections Art Showcase of all the winners at the Fullerton Museum Center on Tuesday, November 7, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This event is actually very inspiring. When you see the incredible artwork or the fantastic dances they perform, or hear the marvelous poetry that these little kids, whatever, are performing, it's witness the creativity and the music that people have composed. It's such a wonderful experience. So I invite you guys to come. Come and see these creations done by our amazing Fullerton Joint Union and FSD kids. Just a reminder to all of our pencils and superintendents and assistant superintendents and our esteemed board members, our annual Fullerton Council PTA President Principal Luncheon will be held at October 21, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. Once again, we thank the Fullerton School District for hosting us in their district courtyard. As always, we welcome anyone to attend our council meetings, which are usually held on a fourth Tuesday of each month at 9:30 at the Fullerton Joint Union Boardroom. We hear from our superintendents, various guest speakers, and a great opportunity to ask those burning questions about PTA. Meeting dates are posted on our new website. It's fullertoncouncilpta.org. You can always reach out to us at fullertoncouncilptainfo@gmail, and we welcome any input, and we're always happy to answer questions. So please reach out. Thank you so much. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Okay, CSEA? Anyone?
CS does not have a report.
FETA, report tonight? No report? Okay. Asma, a report tonight?
No report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we're moving on. Oh, see? It's not on here. It's not on here, Zepa! So I mentioned earlier that we have a new group that has started up with our special education parents. So they now have a spot on our agenda. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. President Berryman, Dr. Bob, and Cabinet, and our board. Julie Brandon, Director of Student Support Services. As you know, back in May, we launched our Special Education Parent Alliance.
Good evening, I'm Tammy Camerata, Director of Special Ed. And I'd like to introduce one of our parent ambassadors, Alma Trahio, who's one of our amazing parents. And she's going to share a little update of our SEPA for this month on the fair.
I know we need a stool. I'm with you, Alma. I get it. We're going to get one.
All right. Good evening, board, President Berryman, school board, Dr. Placka, Cabinet, and community. I'm excited to share about our Special Education Parent Alliance Fair that took place September 19. This event was so much more than just a day of activities. It was a celebration of inclusion, community, and the incredible kids and families we serve. One of the things that made Zepa Fair extra special was the VIP early access for our students with extensive needs. This allowed families to arrive before the gates officially opened, giving our kids a chance to explore and participate at their own pace in a calmer, quieter environment. Everything about the event was thoughtfully designed to support all of our students, from noise levels and sensory experiences to mobility and accessibility. We had some amazing sensory and activity booths, like shaving cream, sensory play with our FSD occupational therapists, art and movement with all the arts, bubbles, and even calming booth for everyone needed, when anyone needed a quiet moment. We had so many wonderful community partners join us. John Wayne Airport, North Orange County, Salpa, Hazel Health, Carisales, Daybreak, and our FSD transportation team brought a bus full of, for the students to explore. Fullerton PD rolled in with both police and a SWAT vehicle. Fullerton Fire brought a fire truck and prescription pet therapies showed up with six adorable therapy dogs. In addition, we were so thankful to have our PTR, our FSD nurse, and our community schools team there as well, offering support, information, and resources for families. And of course, we had a delicious barbecue, thanks to Dr. Placka, Dr. Chat Nutrition Services, and so many others who kept the grill going all day. My family and, and my family had a really wonderful time at the Zepa Fair. There was even a moment where I got emotionally, feeling so overwhelmed in the best way, just seeing all the hard work that went into making this day possible. It was the first time I truly felt that all my children were included. Looking around, I could see how much joy the kids were experiencing along their families. As a parent, it was also so meaningful to connect with other families, staff, and transportation services. The afternoon ran so smoothly, not too noisy, not chaotic. It was truly something for everyone. I know that as a parent, I felt deeply grateful to shit, to grateful to have an event where our children felt seen, supported, and included, where it was so clear that this day was created for them. This event reminded, reminded all of us why we do what we do. It's about creating, creating spaces where every student feels seen, supported, and included. And on that day, that's exactly what happened. Thank you to everyone who helped make the Zepa Fair possible. Our staff, our volunteers, our community partners, and our amazing families. Together, we made something truly special happen for our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, now we are going to move on to public comments. So I'm going to read our statement. The board meeting follows rules of decorum. Per Board Policy Bylaw 9323, individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. The total time allowed for public comment shall be 30 minutes. Public comments about an item that is on the agenda will be heard at the time the agenda item is considered by the board. Public comments about an item that is not on the posted agenda will be heard at the beginning of open session when called upon by the board president. No action or discussion may take place on an item that is not on the posted agenda, except as expressively authorized by law. Since the board cannot take action on items that are not on the, that are not on the agenda, such items will be referred to the superintendent for handling. Board members may request that an item be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. The board president and superintendent will determine the best time and place for an item on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the board are invited to complete a submit, and submit a request to speak slip to the executive assistant, and the slips are available at the entrance of the room. So I do have several speakers for this evening. I do have several, it looks like on the same subject, which is not on the agenda. So we will take those right now. And I have, everything I have is not on the agenda. So I'm going to read them based on, I believe, how they were submitted. I apologize if I mess up your name now. We do have, it looks like nine speakers on one subject that goes over our 20 minutes. But we'll, if you guys, as we're going through that, if we need to extend time, our board can ask that. Or if you have heard what you were going to say with somebody else, you might want to say that person. So we are going to go ahead and start with Brandon Blakey.
Hi, thank you guys for having us. Thank you guys all for showing up for Mr. Korth. We're here for, a large chunk of us here are for, here for the reinstatement of Mr. Korth. He's our PE teacher at Beachwood. I've been at Beachwood for 11 years, and 10 of them with Mr. Korth. He's turned the PE program around like 180. The first year I was there, we had like no equipment at all. And he's been there 10 years now. We have a bunch of supplies now. He's helped write, helped get grants for us, along with like the, the parent, the PTA here for Beachwood and the foundation and stuff like that. He's shown so much care and heart for all the students at our school. From, you know, we go, we go from TK now to eighth grade. So he has a wide range of students there, and he cares about all of them. He's just always has a smile on his face with all the students there. Sorry. He just puts in so much work there. He's turned around, like, we have lunch programs for our old, our sixth, seventh, eighth graders to keep them busy during lunchtime with sports and stuff. He's coached, he's coached, I don't know, probably all the sports teams at one point or another. He's helped get uniforms 10 years ago, and we're getting new uniforms again, hopefully soon for them. Like I said, all the PE equipment and stuff like that. And just an overall recess equipment and stuff like that, programs, just like stuff you don't, probably don't have at other schools where we play hockey, recess and lunch. We got pickleball for them and stuff. He's this very active teacher there, getting all the supplies that we need. And I've been with him for, like I said, 10 years. And he's just been a great mentor and teacher to work aside, work alongside with him. And as you can see, there's numerous former students here, present students here, and probably little brothers and sisters at home or something like that for future students that are looking forward to having Mr. Korth as their PE teacher in the future. And I know there's a lot of other parents who want to say stuff, and but, I don't know, I've been with them 10 years, and it's been a great 10 years, and hopefully get more years with them. Thank you.
Tim Tran?
So I put a couple of words together. I'm going to read what I have here. Good evening, members of the board, administrators and teachers, and community members. My name is Tim. I'm a parent of two students who have attended Beachwood School. I've had the privilege of knowing Mr. Korth for about nine years, ever since my boys started at Beachwood. During that time, I've come to know him not only as an outstanding physical education teacher, but also as a kind, professional, and deeply respected member of our school community. I have worked closely with Mr. Korth as a parent volunteer when my boys were in kindergarten, two academic years in total. In those early experiences, I saw firsthand how he made physical education fun, engaging, and inclusive for every student. His ability to connect with young children, make them feel confident, and encourage teamwork set a positive tone that carried far beyond the playground. Over the years, I've continued to see the same spirit through FSD and school-related events. Mr. Korth has consistently demonstrated what we hope all educators model for our children: sportsmanship, fairness, and respect for others. His calm, encouraging demeanor has always made students, parents, and volunteers feel welcome and valued. It's been over a month since Mr. Korth has been placed on leave. While I don't know the reasons behind the decision, I fully respect the confidentiality of such matters. I do want to express my family's heartfelt support for him. His absence is deeply felt on campus and in our community. We miss his presence, his positive energy, and the way he brings students together through physical activity and play. I sincerely hope this situation can reach a fair and timely resolution, allowing Mr. Korth to return to doing what he does best: teaching, inspiring, and supporting our children. Thank you for your time and for hearing our community's voice of support for Mr. Korth.
Raquel McLeod?
Good evening. My name is Raquel MacLeod, and I'm a parent of an eighth grader at Beachwood Elementary or middle school, or whatever school you want to call it. Ultimately, I wanted to come and bring, I think Mr. Korth is the best kind of teacher that you can possibly have. My husband's an educator, he's an administrator. I work in higher ed, and that's the kind of teachers we want to produce. But I will say that the reason I came specifically is for the parents that aren't here, that can't speak. We had 591 parents, community members, previous students sign a petition in support of Mr. Korth. And I want to be clear that I respect every parent's choice to want to share or give a concern, because that's why we're all here. But I also want to make sure that the 591 other voices are being heard by the board, by the school district, on what a great teacher he is. So 591 signatures that I want to share with you guys, so I want to give that to you guys, as well as some of the comments that were shared that are not going to be here. I want to read, I've known Mr. Korth since he became a PE teacher at Beachwood. And while my younger daughter attended, she loved Mr. Korth during her time at Beachwood because he made PE fun and engagement for all students. Some of these are from his former students. I had Mr. Korth as a PE coach for as long as I can remember. And it's, it pains me to know that whoever decided to remove him is unaware of the impact he has had on his students. He truly made Beachwood a great experience for me. I can speak for my own daughter. She tried out for the volleyball team. There was 70 kids that tried out. Obviously, they can't all make it. She asked, what can I do? He took the time and not just gave her a shoved-off comment of like, oh, we're hard, try out next year. He said, no, I think you're going to do great. Let me get you some things that I think might work. He came back to her the next week, brought her resources from the community, places that she could go to, like the YMCA, some local clubs, some things that she could try. She worked hard all year. She just tried out for her first club team and made the team. She was really excited to go tell her teacher, and unfortunately, hasn't been able to. I find it really unfortunate that the voice of just a few parents is going to overshadow the work and legacy that he's left for many students. Now, I'm not only at Beachwood, I'm also at Rolling Hills. And I can tell you that my daughter, who has seen both programming, is incredible. To get teenage girls and boys to enjoy PE is a feat. And to want to do it during lunch, also a feat. And yet, every one of his leagues, dodgeball, everything else, has not only participants, but spectators. He has found a way to engage all the age groups there to make a community. And I just find that to be, that it needs to be valued, appreciated, and applauded, and hopefully replicated at every other school on this school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria? Is it MacLeod?
Good evening. I'm Victoria MacLeod. I'm a, I'm a student at Beachwood. I'm an eighth grader. I came here in seventh grade. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate my teacher, Mr. Korth. He's not only really encouraging and supportive, but he makes PE fun. I'm, I've actually learned so much in his class, not just about fitness, but about how to really play the sports we do. He takes the time to show us the rules, the skills, and how to do, and how to work together as a team. And he makes sure everyone understands. He's also amazing at the sports he teaches us, which makes it even more inspiring when he teaches us the sports. What I really like is how he doesn't stop at class. He even dedicates his time at lunch to run sports and games. Even if we're not all playing, he finds ways to get us all involved, so that way, no one feels left out. Because of him, PE isn't just any class. It's something we all look forward to every week. He makes it fun, he makes it challenging, and he makes us believe in ourselves. That's why I think he's such a great teacher. He's truly missed by me and my other classmates. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Evans?
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Chris Evans. I have two daughters who attend Beachwood Elementary. I am one of the parents who lodged a complaint about Mr. Korth. I understand everybody here is supportive, they have good stories, and I understand that. He's well-liked, he's popular, he's done a lot for kids. Unfortunately, I don't think the school has handled the leave very well. There's been a lot of misinformation, some selective leaks of who complained, and that's led to some retaliation, both against parents and children. So I kind of wanted, I know the district can't disclose the grounds for the investigation, but I certainly can share my story. And I hope that that provides a little bit more understanding. Mostly, I'm doing this for my little daughter, so she no longer experiences any type of retaliation at school because of what her father did. So my story, last year, I received a call from a friend who has a kid in the same class as mine. That person indicated that they had found a picture of their child on Mr. Korth's social media page, not related to Beachwood, not related to the school. It was a public post on Instagram, Facebook threads, where the whole world had access to it. She advised me, take a look, make sure your daughters aren't on there. So we went through, and there were a mountain of videos of little kids doing PE work, things that shouldn't be posted on social media. I don't know if the parents are aware of the extent of the images and the videos that are out there, but they were there. I went through about half of them, didn't find any of my daughters. So I went up to my kids and I said, hey, has anybody ever taken a picture of you at school? One of my daughters said no, one of them said yes. I said, who? Mr. Korth. Well, what happened? He saw the way I was dancing with one of my friends in PE class, and he asked me to stay after class so he could take a video of me dancing. I said, okay, did he take a video on his, on the school iPad? No, it was on his phone. Did I do anything wrong, Daddy? No, you didn't do anything wrong. He's a trust, he's a teacher, you trusted him, right? So at that point, and just to let you know, my, my wife and I are pretty private. Our kids don't have cell phones, they don't even have smartwatches. Once a video gets out there on social media, it's out there forever. Bad things can happen, AI generation, I mean, those videos last. So we went to the district. I wasn't trying to get Mr. Korth suspended or fired. I just said, look, one of your employees took an inappropriate video of my little girl dancing. I want that phone scrubbed, I want that image removed, and I want to make sure that anything he posted of her is taken off, right? What happened? Nothing really. I was informed the school didn't have jurisdiction over his personal phone. So he went back to teaching, my daughters, and my daughters love Mr. Korth, went back to school. They were in PE class again. I wasn't sure, though, that all the videos would have been taken down from social media and that he would no longer be taking videos of my little daughter. Is that my time? Can I finish real quick?
You can.
Okay. So, so to my surprise, then, what's the next assignment that she receives? She's to take a video of herself dancing and submit it to Mr. Korth. What's going on here? So again, we went back to the school, and we said, So again, we went back to the school, and we said, a number of us, "Hey, I just don't want my daughters involved in this. Can they black out of this so they're not penalized if they don't take place?" And one of the parents who had also complained submitted the actual images that he had posted on his website or on his social media pages. And I think for the first time, the district saw those images and how inappropriate they were of little girls in PE classes in various poses. And so, we did, again, what we needed to do as parents. I don't know Mr. Korth, I'm not trying to get him fired, I'm just trying to protect my little girl. And the reason I want to share this with you is because students are now coming up to her asking her, "Why is your dad trying to get my kid, Mr. Korth, fired? Why does he hate Mr. Korth?" I don't know where this is coming from, but I'm hoping that if you guys understand where we're coming from, maybe we can lessen the frustration and the temperature out there, and at least let our kids know that, hey, my daughter and the other daughters and kids whose parents complained, they did nothing wrong, and they should not be a part of any type of retaliation. Thank you.
Thank you. Marina Allensworth?
Hi there. So I had two children attend and graduate from Beachwood. And when Mr. Korth came on as a PE teacher, it was easy to see how special he was. He and Mr. Brandon quickly became a fantastic team, and I'm so very glad that they were part of my daughter's lives during such formative years. Simply put, Mr. Korth is a treasure and exactly the type of teacher that you want on your campus. My daughter and his daughter were close friends, so I also got to see Mr. Korth's character off-campus for years, up close and personal. He's an incredible father of five. He and his wife, Amy, are genuine in their care for students and for parents. He once told my daughter's volleyball team and all the parents that were there that there was no reason all those girls shouldn't be playing on high school teams, just like your daughter. So, those words really stuck, and my daughter is currently a three-sport athlete with a strong belief in herself. And she had a game tonight at Troy, but sent the statement for Mr. Korth. "He has not only changed our school, the kids' lives, he doesn't just teach PE, but how to be a better person, constantly has been there for every student. When I look back at my time at Beachwood, it's with much appreciation because of the amazing teachers there. Mr. Korth is and will always be one of the best. He treats every kid with kindness and respect, and that's what kids need at the end of the day, someone who cares about them enough to remember when they had to play a game or a recital." So, her confident foundation was built with the help of Mr. Korth and Mr. Brandon. And a child that believes in their abilities is crucial. And a PE teacher, that's a big part of that, believing in your physical abilities. So, I look forward to his return to campus, as I'm sure many of you do. And I was very pleased with my time at Beachwood. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Gambino?
Hi, my name is Jen, Jennifer Gambino. I am also one of the PE aides. I have worked alongside with Mr. Korth last year. I have to say, when Ms. Lynn came up to me last year and said, "Can you please help?" I said, "Absolutely not, I will not do this, I am not a PE aide." Talked a little bit more, and I said, "You know what? I'm working alongside Mr. Korth and Mr. Brandon. I have two children who are there, this is actually the perfect job for me." While I was there, as I'm still there, all I can say is the wonderful things that I have learned, not only about Mr. Korth, but about our school as well, the uniqueness of our school. You know, we've said some comments, we're all parents. I have a daughter who goes to Beachwood, I have my son who goes to Beachwood, and I understand that. We're all, in 2025, we are all up in arms, we all have to keep our guard up as parents, right? But I also think that one of the great, beautiful, unique things about Beachwood, not only am I a teacher there, I'm also in the PTA, so I've been involved in the school multiple different aspects, right? I think, like I said, what makes Beachwood so wonderful? Not only the teachers, but just the community that is around there. Now that I'm a working parent, I can't attend every event. You know, my son got to go to Newport Dunes or to the whale watching, and I couldn't go. I couldn't go because I was at school all day long. One of the greatest things that I appreciated is getting pictures of my son while he was there, from friends, from staff, from everybody that was there. And I've gotten those pictures, my daughter is now an eighth grader. I've gotten those pictures for eight years now, and it's been fantastic, and I love that. And I respect the people, the trust that I have in these people, because they're sending them to me. And that's from their private devices. I'm a PTA member, and I can probably go back on my phone, if you search my phone right now, I probably have kids from classrooms, pictures that I've taken for Christmas parties, for the California cookie, and I send them to my friends that aren't there when I get the opportunity. So, all that I'm asking for in this thing is that everybody be treated fairly and get a just process. Because, like I said, at the end of the day, and I'm not saying that maybe that is the right thing or the wrong thing, but I do think that there's a lot of us who are doing the same thing. And maybe he, I'm just asking for justice for all around, a just process for him. That's it.
Thank you. And is this Brandon Buckle? Brandon? Brandon?
Thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Brandon. I'm not a betting man, mainly because I'm too cheap, but I would bet today for the first time, in fact, I would double down on a bet, that when is the last time you've seen this many people in this room? I wouldn't know that because I don't come to these meetings, but I bet that this is probably the fullest this room's been in a long time. What's the reason? Because of Mr. Korth. Mr. Korth has had an influence on so many students, hundreds and hundreds of students over the years. In 2017, my wife and I decided to move all four of our kids from a private school to Beachwood. Imagine that, that's a difficult feat when you have four kids and already having friends and being established. Moved over to Beachwood, one of the first people who greeted us and made my, especially my boys at that time, comfortable was Mr. Korth. He showed so much compassion, he showed so much grace. And over the years, I've gotten to know Mr. Korth. He's an honorable man, a respectful man, and someone with deep values. There's not many people like him, and I hope that the political climate of this day is not influencing certain people to gaslight or to exaggerate in any way. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last speaker on this is Cindy Okert. Cindy?
Thank you. I didn't really come prepared to speak today, but as I entered this room, I saw a lot of familiar faces. And they're not just faces of Beachwood, they're our Beachwood family. And I can tell you, there is something very special about Beachwood. It's our staff, and in particular, Coach Korth. He has been on Beachwood campus since 2015. And his presence there is something that is so deep in our hearts and so indescribable to what he does for our children. When you come on that campus, you can clearly see that physical ed is a priority there for those children. I've been on a lot of campuses, you don't see that in the other schools. Nothing like Beachwood, nothing like what Coach Korth has brought to Beachwood. There was a defining moment for my family when we were going to decide whether we stay at Beachwood for junior high or move on to Parks or Ladera Vista. And then I got to see Coach Korth already in a couple of years before my son went into sixth grade and seventh grade. And we made the decision, I love all you, I love you, it's not against you, but my son was an athlete, and he wanted to be an athlete. I wasn't guaranteed whether what he would do at Parks or Ladera Vista. I don't know their PE staff, I don't know what they were going to offer him. I knew what Coach Korth was going to offer. I got to know him very, very well. I would participate in a lot of during their lunch activities. This gentleman does not take a lunch. He's always there for the children. Even if it's not an athletic concern, he's going to sit and talk to the child. As a human being, you know, a lot of times people go in and do their job. They come in, teach, leave. Not Coach Korth. He is a man of compassion, dignity, a huge heart, one that wants every child to succeed. And he has shown me photos of my children on his phone. He sent them to me back in the day, but it's, and it's nothing... I respect the parents that do not want their children on social media. But on the flip side, other parents want to see their children in the activities that they're doing. They want to feel that participation when they cannot be present. And it means a lot when you have this trust in somebody and you allow them to fulfill a need that you want to see those photos of their children doing spectacular things. It was never, ever anything negative that I ever saw. And so I just want to take this time, this is heart-wrenching for a lot of us. This is more than just education, and I know my time is up, but I just pray that we can come together and have a clear understanding of what this is truly, and make a valid, a truly valid decision on this. By removing him, I have to tell you, there's plenty of other teachers in this district that use their phone privately. So if this is something that you guys want to initiate across the board, then maybe initiate it. But to do this to one individual is heart-wrenching in our community, in our Beachwood community, and the community of the children that will be going on to, maybe they don't stay at Beachwood for junior high, maybe they go to Parks, maybe they go to Ladera Vista, but then especially their high school experience and being an athlete. Do you know that children need that more than ever right now? The stress level of them in the classroom is horrendous. They need that sole person that they can lean on out in the field. So please, I ask you, with my hugest heart, I'm not even a speaker normally, but my love for Beachwood community, Coach Korth, and the children, I'm a huge child advocate. I wouldn't be standing up here if I wasn't. I speak for the children that are going to miss out on an amazing opportunity if they do not have this gentleman there to instruct them. So thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, I have a question for my board. Since we've started, we have three more additional speakers. Three times three, nine more minutes, if that. Are you guys okay with extending, or? I just want to make sure I'm not making a unilateral decision.
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Then we will move on to Josh. Josh Cora? Kosa?
Kosa. I come from this from a slightly different angle. I've known Kurt for 30 years, probably more than anyone in this room. I knew Kurt from when I was 13, and I've had a firsthand experience into his character. He first mentored me when he moved into our neighborhood. I was a rebel without a cause. And he took interest. He coached me, but he also spiritually took interest in me. And for some of you, you may not know that Kurt was actually a pastor. And he pastored me for several years. And when I became a 24-year-old, I became a pastor with him. And I got to know him on an even deeper level. And I can tell you right now, for the past 30 years, his character has been spotless. And I understand the parents' concern. My concern is the framing of it. The kind of framing that insinuates ill motive, that is despicable. I understand, I understand. I understand having concerns. I have five children of my own. I love Kurt so much, I became a neighbor to him nine years ago. And I entrust all of my children to him. To impugn his character or to insinuate ill motive without any evidence, and then throwing on him the terrible reaction to the parents' children, a retaliation that should not happen, but to ascribe that or to somehow mislead us that that's Kurt's fault is unacceptable. To lose Kurt in that kind of community in the public education system would be a huge loss. And so as someone who has seen him for the past 30 years of noble character, I implore you, keep him for the sake of this community. He will not only teach them about education, but he pours into them to build their character, to forge them to be able to go out into the world, to have a voice and to make a difference. He's done that in my life, in my children's life, and as you can see in the lives of countless people. Thank you.
Okay. We have Kalen in Brooklyn.
Hello, my name's Kalen Aguila, and I'm currently a seventh grader at Beachwood School. I've been at Beachwood for eight years, and when I was first introduced to Mr. Korth, I knew that he would make me enjoy PE. Throughout my years at Beachwood, he has pumped me up and pushed me to do better. I do a sport and it's softball, and I remember every week he would ask me, "Hey, do you have any softball games?" And I would, "Have any softball games this week?", and I would tell them when. He would always come to my games and support me and push me and help me when I had trouble. Mr. Korth is like the heart of our school, and if he leaves, it would be like a puzzle piece would be missing from a hole. In COVID, I would remember, if anything happened, I would go to him. He'd be the important person that would help me. This is, I would love Mr. Korth to come back, and I hope he does.
Hi, my name's Brooklyn Putnam, and I'm also in seventh grade, a fellow classmate of Kalen. And Mr. Korth is like one of my favorite PE teachers. Before I moved to Fullerton, I lived in Huntington Beach. And I feel like Mr. Korth is just so much better. He's like one of the best teachers. But also, I did the volleyball team in sixth grade for Beachwood, and I honestly thought I wasn't going to make it. But I did make it, and I made it as an alternate, though. So, but that helped me, though, like pursue, like get better. And like, I was, like, being an alternate means like you're there if somebody like gets hurt or something, but then you also get to go to practices and other stuff. So, when I was there to support my teammates for the game, Mr. Korth, like, if we were winning, but also he wouldn't do it if we were winning, like, he would just randomly let me go in and sub me in. He didn't care if I messed up, he would just be there for me, even if I messed up. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Reagan Gliedwell?
Hello. I wanted to start off by saying that Mr. Korth was my PE teacher. I am now a sophomore in college, and my sister, Ryland, is an eighth grader at Beachwood. I want to start off by saying that he was probably the best teacher I had at Beachwood. He loved my family, and he was there for us through some of the most difficult things we had ever gone through. When I was in seventh grade, I lost my mom, and he was the first teacher to go out of his way and help my family. He even did my mom's memorial. And as many people have said, he was a pastor, and he has helped me in my faith so, so much, and has encouraged me. Growing up, I was a swimmer, and I swam for fast, and now I coach there, and I can honestly say that I wouldn't be where I'm at today without his guidance. He always told me that I was a great athlete, and he made me believe it, deep down. And he always encouraged me, he encouraged my older brother. He encouraged my older brother who played baseball. He would come to some of his baseball games and encourage him there. And again, going through the hardest part of our entire life and he was there through all of it, always encouraging us. When I was in high school, he would come to my cross country and track and field meets if he was able to. He invited us over for Good Friday. Things that a normal teacher wouldn't necessarily do, but he cares about his students much more than a normal teacher does. And I want to bring this up because this is something that I feel like is so important and we've already mentioned it. But I genuinely believe that this has a lot to do with the political climate of our world right now. And I think it's unfair. I went through Beechwood, I went through high school, believing things that most teachers at those schools didn't believe. And I felt very out, I felt like an outsider because of it. And I don't think that Mr. Korth is being treated fairly in this. I think that a lot of the reports are exaggerated or maybe aren't seen in the right light. I know that guy and I know that he loves his students and he would never do anything out of ill intention. And so I just want everybody here to think about whether or not this is a matter of his character, character, or if this has been a tax for the past couple of years. So, thank you.
We have one more public speaker slip that I have here and that's Rosalyn Henderson.
I'm inspired. This is a totally different topic, however. So I want to say hello to Dr. Pletka and the board members and the cabinet. I was a teacher with Inglewood Unified School District for 30 years and I burned out. I retired in 2019. And my passion is to help districts retain the best and brightest employees because many are leaving because they're burned out. I want to reduce absenteeism with districts. And I want there to be an enhancement with re-engagement with education. I want teachers to fall in love with teaching again. So my son, Dr. Emel, and I created a program called Beyond Self-Care Basics and we deal with six pillars of self-care, mental, emotional, physical, relational, energetic, and a sense of meaning and purpose. And it's designed to help educators and staff not burn out, but we want to mitigate stress. And so I just simply would like to just leave a flyer with you, doctor, and we could talk further.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a shout out because I did, I did hear you speak last week at the SHE conference, so thank you. But you can give us a flyer. All right, on that note, I believe that we don't have any more public comments. We move on to the rest of our meeting. I, I think I'm going to give us a personal privilege break, five minutes, and then we'll come back to finishing out our, our meeting. So five minutes, my board, come back. Testing. Oh, good. Thank you. All right, we're coming back. We're ready. Okay. We're going to move on now. We're going to move on now to approving our minutes from our last board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 16th?
So moved.
Been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from the September 16th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and opposed? All right. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We, we do have one like small correction in the consent, but I think I'll bring it up at consent. Okay. Right? Which is now? Okay. No presentat- no presentations? No?
One.
Wait a minute, hold on. Wait. Hold on. Okay. No, we're not going to be here nearly as long as I, now. We'll save the best till the end. Okay, consent agenda. Do we have any items that need to be pulled? I do have a change. We didn't get it in writing, but there's a change to item K on the gifts. I don't know if you'll pull that up, Anna. There was a gift listed for $45,000.
What?
It was 45,900. We had a couple more zeros than we needed. It's really $459. I did wonder who that was from, so.
But anyone who wants to give $45,000 will accept it.
We'll take it for violins. So it should read $459. Right, just that number.
And we are still grateful for that amount of violin.
Yes.
Good. All right. Do we have any items on the agenda that anyone has any comments about? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
Moved.
Moved.
It's been seconded. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any approve, any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, we're moving on to our discussion items. Let me get back over here. We're approving the new interim superintendent contract effective February 1st, 2026 through June 30th, 2026.
Where are you going?
With the retirement of our current superintendent and the timing of that, we need to put, secure things in place. And we have, as a board, felt like Dr. Hammett would be able to help us get through the period of time that we need to without any bumps or bruises. And so we are, his contract for that would be starting February 1st through the end of June. There is a provision in there of some, if someone were to start ahead of time, that, that would be over then. So do I have a motion to approve the new interim superintendent contract effective February 1st, 2026 through June 30th, 2026?
Moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the interim superintendent contract effective February 1st, 2026 through June 30th, 2026. No other comments? Seeing none?
I, I actually just wanted to say, I think we, obviously we all agree that we wanted to think about how to minimize disruption and ensure that our staff, especially in our schools, all had as much predictability and stability through this transitional time. I also wanted to just thank Dr. Bob. I think he was being very thoughtful with his birthday and the timing of his retirement to, in leaving in February, it gives us the ability to continue the process and hire in the March, April months, which is really when most admin are hired, if they're looking for a new position but not forced to look for a job. So it really works out very well for us as a district to have that capacity. And when we thought about how to continue the school year until we were able to secure someone, Dr. Hammett was the obvious choice for us in that he served our deck, our district for over a decade and just especially carrying a number two spot and really some of the most difficult jobs of working with HR and security and litigation and really have been through the wringer and a lot of tough things and trust you to continue to, continue this work through the school year. So thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye.
Okay. All right, moving on to our new memorandum of understanding. Do we have someone, where is that one? Dr. Hammett, you're going to come speak on this one? Our new MOU?
Yes, the state of California has put in place a new reading difficulties screener and that screener requires that every student in kindergarten, first and second grade receives a one-on-one screening from the teacher regards to difficult, reading difficulties, specifically looking for dyslexia. And so we have worked with our teachers' union to set in place a sub-release day so that teachers will have time to be able to do that one-on-one. set in place a sub-release day so that teachers will have time to be able to do that one-on-one screening with each of their students and be able to meet individually with those students and complete that screening with all the students in their class.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Hammett? All right, do I have a motion to approve the new MOU between the Fullerton School District and the Fullerton Elementary Teachers Association for Reading Difficulties Risk Screener Support for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year? Have a motion?
A motion to accept that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Thank you for working on that and making that so that we can have some coverage for that.
Yeah, I know it's required by the state, but I appreciate our teachers that are making the effort to learn a new tool and to support our kids because we know that kids who have learning disabilities or difficulties, it can set them up for a lifetime of feeling behind and a lot of insecurity that comes with it. So the sooner we can identify and support the better chance we have of having great readers, great kids that feel confident at school. So thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Moving along. Okay, now we are at our interview questions and appointment process. So as everyone knows, we have lost a trustee. And with that, we, as a board, had decided to, instead of going to an election where it would cost us some money, we are going to go through the appointment process. And in order to do that, we have to make sure that we're doing some things. Do we have a speak, do we have someone speaking on that? And then we'll start our conversation.
This evening, we've brought Mary Hernandez, who works with Natasha. We actually sat her at the table with us. So she'll be here tonight to help the board through the process of looking for questions and then discussing the process that the board will follow on the October twenty-ninth meeting. So without further ado, Mary Hernandez.
Good evening. I didn't prepare a presentation, but I'm here to answer questions and help in any way I can. So I'm happy to help.
Okay. So sequentially, what we, the things that we need to decide this evening are our candidates have until Friday to apply. We, what we need to work on this evening is kind of that process. So we have scheduled October twenty-ninth for the interviews. We need to come up with the fact on if, in fact, how, how long. You know, so as we're going through, we have to, we have to approve our questions. There, there is a list of questions that the candidates have when they sign the application. So there are some basic questions that have already been asked. So those basic questions obviously wouldn't be something that we're gonna add into the interview unless anyone has clarifying questions and you want to add that. The board has been given twenty-eight questions that we kind of came up with as just something to look at. I doubt whether we can do all twenty-eight questions. We probably should limit how many we're gonna do, but kind of figure out which ones are our most important. So we, as a board, need to go through that process this evening and maybe go through and maybe what we can do is each one of us can say our top, you know, give our top two or three or four. Find out if there's commonality and then add from that. I'm looking to Mary because I've been doing this for a while. I'm assuming that, you know, maybe a half an hour per candidate, twenty minutes per candidate.
It depends on how many candidates you have.
Right.
And how many, so, and you won't, you won't really know that till
Right.
Friday, but assuming you, if you can assume three to five candidates as a ballpark range, then you can determine, you know, twenty to thirty minutes max is what I would suggest. I would also suggest that it's very important that the, when you pick a question, the same board member asks the same question of all candidates. One to two questions max. And the only other advice that I would have is that since the candidates have already provided a lot of written answers to some really important questions that you've posed, the live interview is gonna focus less on, you know, resume details and experience, facts about experience, and it's your opportunity to get a taste for their judgment, their communication style, how they, how they're, they align with your values as a group and and how, how they would be an asset as a member of the team. And so questions that would elicit that information for you about the, you know, the judgments and communication styles. So if you, if there's a scenario-based question that allows you to see how they think and how they approach things, those can be very valuable.
All right. Perfect. So, so this evening, do we want to start with our questions first?
I was actually thinking, maybe if we started with the format, because I think the number of questions we ask will be determined by how much time we allocate and how we make those decisions about timing. I assume that if we're working from five to seven-thirty is what I have on the calendar right now. So if we leave, I would, I would suggest an hour and a half for, for interviewing and then leaving an hour for deliberation and then additional sort of opening and closing sort of conversation. We might take less than an hour, but I think that I would want to make sure we have enough time. Does that seem reasonable, or do you think we don't need that much time?
I think we have a start time and no end time.
Okay.
I mean, I just don't, I don't, I don't think we'll know until we know how many applications we get. If we get twenty applications, we might have to go more than one and a half hours, two hours. I think setting the time on deliberation is good. Like, no, no more than this amount of time to deliberate. And so that the people here know that this all has to be done in public. So as we're going through this process, it's gonna be, I'm just gonna say, it's gonna be a little awkward. Right, your, your candidates come, they speak in the public, we interview in the public, we deliberate in the public. And so this whole process is very new to all of us and we're human, right? And so I, you know, look at this and we're trying to figure out exactly how we're gonna go about this, being as fair as we possibly can. So as we said, having, every board member will ask the same questions each time. We won't be able to ask different questions to the candidates. It will be all the same question. We won't go into any clarifications, I wouldn't think, because then that could seem prejudice for one and not the other.
No follow-up questions?
So we really, I think, we need to really watch that because we, we do need to be fair to everybody. Maybe a clarifying question as opposed to something that's a little bit more deeper, because if we don't go deep with one and we go with another, that could seem like it's not fair. So I, I think that we have to be as fair as we possibly can as a interview board. But, but going through that process, so we would, we would, so, so for you, as we're saying this, so the process would be that we'd start our, we'd start, we would select the, the order that the people are chosen to, to be interviewed by lottery. Does that sound the best way to do it, by lottery? And so will they know their order before they get here? So should we do that lottery after we get the applications in and then as we're notifying them to say, hey, this is your interview, this is what time you're coming, you are number one, number two, or number three, I mean, or four or five? I think that might be helpful to people, but we have that, we can decide.
The way we did it, when James and I were going to interviews during our campaign, is we would get there and we would each pick a number right there and then. So then it was our luck. Like, we got to choose a number and that was the number. So I think it would be fair for them to come in and we just have, you know, numbers in a cup and they get to pick their own number and that is the nu, the sequence that they're gonna go in.
That seem fair enough? I mean, does that seem okay? That's, that's clear to you.
And you, you're, as I understand it, you will have a room set aside. You can have drinks, refreshments, coffee so that they can sit in that room. As I, I believe I mentioned before to your staff, the, even though it's a public meeting and anyone can attend, I have never seen candidates not cooperate when we ask them to voluntarily wait in the room while others are interviewing so that you don't have candidates unfairly able to watch everybody else interview and then, and then you know, that, for the, and then influence how they interview. So so doing it that way is very transparent. There's no question about why they got the number they got, because they picked it themselves.
Themselves.
Very, it's very transparent and it's, you won't, you know, people won't question it.
All right, so that's, everybody agree on that one?
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes.
Can you give us an example of what other districts did poorly that led the appointment to being challenged? Like, I know we're trying to be fair, but I'm trying to get a more concrete example of, has there been a recent appointment that's been challenged?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead. You, you may have, you have an example, I think.
Well, in, in Newport Mesa recently, they did a selection process and the person that they were selected, they selected was challenged by the community who then pushed a election in that district. But I don't think that there was anything that they did that was either breaking of the law or inappropriate in any way. It just was simply that there was a, a large enough group in the community that wanted a different candidate to be chosen, that they mounted a campaign against it.
Yeah, so it's, this is a, a decision that you, as a board, can make and and you have wide latitude and flexibility to make it. So the challenges are more political in nature. So it, your process, having a fair process is about building and maintaining public trust and transparency with your community. If they are unhappy with the process and the fairness and the approach, the remedy is for them to gather signatures to force you to have a special election, which they can do after you make your appointment. They have thirty days if they, if they really are unhappy with your process and your selection in which to go out and gather signatures and force a special election. So it's, it's really a political remedy, if you will.
Yeah, I think that's a key point. It's, what we saw was not that the process was inappropriate, but that the community was just not satisfied with the selection, which is not something we can control necessarily. We can do our best to try to represent the community and, and have a fair, a transparent process.
So would it be fair to say that since Madi is recommending that we each pick one to two questions to ask, that out of the twenty-eight, is it twenty-eight? Out of the twenty-eight, we choose the top eight? Because we're each only gonna be able to ask one to two questions. But in order to do that, since Madi said the application already has some questions that might be similar to this, can we?
But they're not, the questions that are on the application are not here.
These are different.
These are different.
Okay.
The questions that we will ask are, are not duplicated.
Okay.
I checked, I checked to make sure.
Okay, I, I wanted to get a refresher. That's why I was like, we get it up there so we can just
Now, we're, so the questions that you have, the twenty-eight possible questions.
And there's a lot of repeats.
Yeah, there are repeats and we could just kind of work at the, the top one.
Before we go to the questions, just to finalize the process that we're gonna go through, I believe that because it's a public meeting, we would have public comments before we get started. So I think in that beginning piece where we introduce and kind of establish, okay, this is the agenda, this is what we're doing, there's a space for public comments. So we can assume, I don't think we'd have a ton of people like tonight, but you know, that we want to leave some time for that before then we dismiss all the applicants to go then and into the other room and start the first interview process. You guys agree with that?
Yeah, so have them start in the room, we go through the process.
Yes.
Explain the
Agenda.
Sequence. And then have them, ask them to go to the other room. That sounds like it would work for me.
Yep. Then afterwards, the question of the, I assume we would deliberate, make our final choice, and the applicants would return to the room and we would announce who we had chosen. And then my question was, do we swear them in at that moment? Or is it more appropriate to wait until the November date? I know that they technically can begin functioning as a school board member, but they have that thirty-day period where they can be challenged.
Yeah, no, they, as soon as you make the appointment, they can immediately begin taking on the roles of a board member. So
So should we swear them in?
If you are, yeah, you absolutely can swear them in right away. If you would like to do that, they could be sworn in anywhere, anytime.
Swear them in the, the next meeting.
Yeah, the next.
I mean, you, they could start, I, I think
Bring their family.
Kind of celebration.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, if you, you can absolutely
So the first November meeting, we would swear them in.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if, for example, there were some duties you wanted them to partake in between the appointment time and the November meeting, you could have a the ministerial qualification oath taken, but then a ceremonial celebratory one at the meeting.
Yes.
So you, you can have as many swearing-in ceremonies as you like. So
No, exactly. Because I believe that's how we do it.
When we take the oath.
When we do it normally.
Register us office.
Right, right, so.
I mean, just from a symbolic piece, you know, you have everybody come in there, they do their, let's say, let's say we have four or five candidates. I think we have three at this point. At that point, yeah, maybe their families there, but it's not gonna be feeling that celebratory moment. It's in some ways a kind of a, we'll say fought battle, but stressful and there's some angst around it. Whereas the next meeting in November, and like you said, Ruthie, it's just a couple weeks later and we really can have a nice celebration. Their families can be there. We can take some pictures. It's a nice, just like a nice time.
And I think the good news is we're doing this in November, so we, all the duties we'd want them to start performing would be probably, especially December with the CSBA conference and things like that, so we can yeah, get started.
So, so going back, so we've gotten that part now, as we're doing the questions, when we're interviewing or when we're deliberating, I, I think that's, you know, just maybe talk this through a little bit, because I know that as we are deliberating people, focusing on strengths, focusing on, you know, making sure that we're, you know, again, it, this, it's an awkward time, so I want to make sure that we are all comfortable with that. I have heard from other school districts that sometimes what they'll do is assign a a number or a letter to the name of the person. So instead of saying so-and-so is this, or, you know, has this strength, they would say candidate A, or candidate B, or candidate C. I don't know if we want to do that or not. Or if we just want to have first names, the second names, whatever we do it. Just as we're, as we're having deliberations. I mean, it makes it less personal as you're starting to talk about it. So that was one question that I had. And how we wanted to do that. I mean, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is that if we had three, you know, three or four, we don't have enough to do like a forced ranking, but as we're speaking, I think that as we, as we go through the process, maybe at the start of deliberations, finding out if, if we might have the same top two. You know, if we all have the same top two, then it's an, you know, it's easier to deliberate as opposed to if we all have, our third person is all our third person, then we can eliminate that person. And then, so somehow we have to, somehow I want to know if we all have the same, because if we all interview and it's the same one person, do we then, you know, then we, do we continue with deliberations? Or do we just say, oh, hey, everybody has the same person, let's just move on?
Yeah.
Or do we say, hey, everybody has the same person, let's talk about it? I mean, I think that's a conversation we need to have on how we
As President, I would absolutely support you to say, who are your top two? And then in that moment, make that decision of, okay, if we all have one person in our top two, do we focus on them or have a deliberation? But we can probably, if there's someone who's not in the top two, we can move on from that, from consideration of that person.
You're okay with that, James?
I think, I don't have a strong feeling about the assigning letters or numbers. I think it might lead to some confusion.
Okay.
But and in some ways, we also want to be respectful and humanize people when we talk about them. I don't know, it's yeah, it could kind of go either way.
Are you just, because for anonymity, you just
I don't think it'll be anonymous, because it'll be a small group.
Yeah, because it's small. I don't know.
But is that why you want to do the numbers, or the A, B, C?
I was just bringing it up because I know that someone had said that that's what they did and it felt better because then that they, like, they were talking about a person.
What's, what's your opinion of that?
It's totally, totally
Up to us.
The board and I haven't, I haven't had any of my client boards do it that way. I could see where it could be confusing. But, you know, it's, it's not a bad idea. It's It's totally up to, you know, the style and desire of the board.
We could think about that, how's that, right now? Okay. Okay, so we, the process itself, and then as we're doing, as we're going through the process, once we finish, we've come to the conclusion of our deliberations, we feel like we've talked about it enough and we feel like we can make a decision, then somebody makes a motion, right, someone motions to have, to appoint so-and-so, and then it has a second and then we vote on, and that's kind of how that process works, right?
So, when I watched, I chose to watch the, um, recording of Newport Mesa, just to get a feel for what it looks like when someone else does it. And they, someone suggested, brought a motion, it was seconded, but then before they voted, they asked if there were any additional motions, and there was an amendment to the motion where someone else nominated a different person. And then, so then it went from, you know, it was kind of in sequential order. So, then the second person nominated, they discussed, they voted, ended up voting no, and they moved on to the first nomination. So, um, would we, one, I guess the question is like, procedurally, do we need to, if we, if, if you were to nominate someone and I was thinking, oh, actually, I was thinking somebody else, um, I could make an amendment to that motion and add, add a second.
And that's what you can do with any motion.
Yeah, but also, we could try as a group to come to some consensus before we make a motion as well.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. All the above.
Yeah. So, that, those are our choices, I guess.
Yeah.
Moment, to make that decision.
Okay. Questions, are we ready for our questions? So, I, what I'm thinking is, is we, you know, I, I don't know how much time everyone's spent looking at the questions, but maybe let's talk about, we, we want to narrow this down
Mm-hmm.
to eight questions, right, does that sound like it, eight is good for everybody, for ten, or?
So, one of my questions was whether we want to limit the total amount of time, because some people will talk a long time about one question, and some people, if we give them eight questions, we could say, two minutes, two minutes, two minutes. So, it's really about a timing process for whether we want to ensure that we get through all of our questions by saying you have two minutes to answer each one, or three minutes, whatever is decided based on the number of applicants, or whether we say, you have twenty minutes, and if you spend it all on the first one, that's all you get, you know, so, I personally would suggest getting through all the questions.
I want to get through all of our questions, I mean, I, I don't think, I, I see it both, I see it both ways, I see people being able to take the time that they need with a, you know, spending one minute on one and three minutes on another, even though it's out to their two minutes. But I do know that we need to get through, I, I would like to get through the same number of questions with, with every person that we have.
So, if that's the case, and we are limiting the timeframe, then we do have to give them a time for a question. Kind of like here, we let them speak for three minutes, we can say, you have two minutes, we're going to ask you eight questions, you have two minutes to answer each question, you can take less, or you can take more, but that is the time that we are allowing. And let's say, let's say the first question only took them one minute to answer, and they still need ten seconds to answer the second question, we can allow them to finish because they only took a minute on the first question.
And I'm hoping the last question is just, you know, tell us something
Yeah.
covered yet, or, you know.
Yeah.
And they can add their time into that. So.
I, I would like one of the questions, or at least the last question to be to tell us.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
The question to be, anything that you would like to tell us that you, we don't already
Add their.
About you.
Add their.
I think that one's important.
So.
What do you think?
So, did we agree on, so what are we saying, the two minutes per?
Two minutes per question.
And, no more than two minutes per question?
Let's see how many questions we're going to ask.
We could ask twenty-eight.
Yeah.
I think if we limit it to eight, then we can say two minutes, and that's twenty-four minutes per person. So, and I think Marty was saying twenty to thirty minutes, that way.
Well, and you have to build in time.
Time frame.
Make sure that we have time to jot down our.
Ask questions.
Yes.
Takes time.
Yeah.
So, I think that would be a good thirty-minute per candidate, if we want to ask those eight questions.
Yep.
So, so, okay, so two, two minute, okay, minutes per.
Mm-hmm.
Use up their time, we'll get there. Um, one other thing before we start to, to look at our questions, um, how do we feel about having candidates come in with no written notes? And being able to, you know, if, if they've viewed in here and they've seen the questions that we're going to ask, they'll know them, or we can even say, these are the questions we're going to ask, so they can prepare. When they get here, could we say, or do, would we want to say, don't bring your notes with you? Uh, we would like to hear you speak and answer the questions based on how you, you know, how you've prepared already, or how you feel, um, I, you know, I want a genuine response from people. I want, I don't want them to have to read, you know, when they get here, they might have to read, but it's like, when you're interviewing somebody, I really want to know, you know, how they, how they answer questions, how they're feeling, how they formulate an, an answer, how they're, you know, what their thinking is, and how they, how they communicate with us. So.
I mean, I would think that if they're interested and they applied already, that they'd be watching us if they're not here, and that they're going to know which questions we're going to ask, because it's on the agenda. And if I was watching and I was here, I'm taking notes as to which questions are going to be asked, so that I know how to answer. No, I understand that, but I'm saying if people are interested, I, I would hope that they're watching, taking notes, and know which questions we're going to ask, so that they are already come prepared.
But I think.
I would hope so.
What, that is.
I know, that they don't come up here and just read their answer.
Differences.
Read their answer.
That maybe spent, you know, chat GPT.
Little bit.
Chat with versus.
My friend Chat.
Yeah.
Chat though.
I mean, I, I think we can do whatever we want, I mean.
I, I think it's best not to limit the, the candidates, and I think your reaction to how the candidate gives the answer will, will be open for discussion. So, if they want to read off the note cards.
They can.
Read off note cards, but it'll come, it'll come up in the discussion, right?
Yeah. Typically, in a candidate forum, I think.
You're allowed to bring.
You're allowed to have notes, and usually there's a prepared statement at the beginning and the end. So, folks might come with talking points or notes for an opening and a closing, but you don't know which questions you're going to get. And you might expect a few and have some talking points, but the idea is to be, um, a little bit more off the cuff and, and natural in response, which I think is obviously the most authentic way to see who a person really is.
Yeah.
We like that.
Which can't be off the cuff now that they know all their answers.
Well, yeah.
And we can't ask any clarifying questions?
No.
Okay. Alright, so we need to pick our eight, should we do eight and then have a couple backups? Or you guys just want to go for like your top, go with our top two, and everyone goes with their top two for now, and then we add? My top two might be the same as your top two, and then we'll have to find more too?
Can we just ask also for clarity, will we have support, like when we do public comments? Can we have someone else from our cabinet doing timekeeping? That will free up the President and others to take notes and rather than paying attention.
Because you guys will be here, it'll be just like a regular meeting.
Right.
Their meeting.
Thank you.
Keep a timer, uh, two minutes per question.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm assuming you want a timer for every question as we work our way through, so that when they get to two minutes, the timer will go off.
Yeah, yeah, so our asking of the questions won't count against their time, but.
But as soon as they start to.
Yeah.
Just so I can clarify.
Do you want to give like, you have ten seconds left?
Like the yellow?
Or no?
Like the yellow, red?
Mm-hmm.
It's green, yellow.
Do that, we could have a, a fifteen-second left type card, hold the card up, it's, it's all up to you.
Does that feel more pressure, or is that helpful?
I usually never watch the cards.
I, I don't know if we need that, too.
We'll, we'll prepare everything.
You'll prepare for every, every possible.
Pop your.
Situation. With a hook, in case you have to pull somebody offstage, just kidding.
Okay, okay, alright. Let's move on to some questions, who would like to start with a couple of their top questions? Or modify some question to make it? See, whose radius?
I had seven.
I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay, so you want to pick which, okay.
I have number seven.
Like number seven?
Seven.
And you, I'm, I edited, so can you tell us what seven is?
It's, you have a printed sheet in front of you.
This one.
Describe how you would.
Describe how you would balance the following when deciding how to vote on a matter before the board, community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff recommendations, and your personal values and beliefs. Sounds kind of long, but.
Do you guys want to go one by one, or you guys just want to throw out yours, and then we'll circle them and then come back?
I mean, okay, so I have number nine. Do you want me to read each one, or can?
No, just your number.
The numbers, otherwise it's going to take forever. Number thirteen. Nineteen. Twenty-three. Twenty-five and twenty-seven.
Ruthie, what was your, or your?
Um, well, twenty-five is actually in the application. It's like, why do you want to be a board member? So, I would suggest not including that in our.
Okay.
Discussion.
I thought it sounded, I thought it sounded similar, that's.
Yeah.
But they said no, it's not on there.
Words are different.
It's a first, well, it's, uh, number four, why do you want to be a governing board member? That's pretty much the same question.
That I thought.
So, we'll have their answer to that before they appear in the interviews.
Okay, so we'll strike twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
I had a slightly edited version of question number one. What do you see as the strengths of our Fullerton School District? And what do you see as the biggest challenges or areas of improvement? And what are your ideas to address these challenges?
Okay, so like number nine?
And weaknesses. Yeah, yeah.
So, it's number nine?
Yeah, those are my edits, the, the changes there, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The number nine.
So, that is. Yep. What are your highest priorities or goals, and what would you like to accomplish as?
What number?
Eleven.
What was it?
I think that's eleven, right, Ruthie?
Eleven?
Yes.
What are your, okay. What else?
There's a que, the question about core values was asked, I combined it with then balancing those with the needs of students, staff, state, and federal laws. So, my question, which is combined, which we could keep separate or do together, is what are your top two to three core values? How would you, how would you make decisions when considering your own values, community concerns, student needs, state and federal laws, and staff recommendations, especially if there's conflict or tension between them?
So, that's a revision of number seven.
It's a revision of number seven.
Which is where?
So, she's just adding in.
Okay.
Values piece, yeah. That makes sense.
Okay.
I also had, how should an effective board ensure opportunities for students, parents, staff, and community members to express the diverse range of views and inform board deliberations on important policy measures, which is five, thank you. And then, something that I added, which could be a, a rehashing of their application, but what strengths, experience, and insights would you bring to the board to make us better?
What number?
Didn't you add?
I added it, so it would be twenty-nine. Is it sixteen?
What strengths, experiences?
Yes.
Yeah, the number sixteen.
I agree that there should be a final question about what, like number twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Anything else you want us to know about yourself? And then, I also added a question about the qualities and qualifications you think are most important in selecting a new superintendent.
Okay, that one's already, I have that one here, what number is that?
Yep.
You have that on here, it's already on, isn't it?
Yep, thanks. Alright.
Okay, that's seven.
Uh, for me, I just have two, number nine as edited, and number twenty-three.
So, we agreed on those two.
You said two?
Nine.
Just number nine and number twenty-three.
Okay, so from that, we need to.
Do you have any other ones that haven't been called out?
Yeah, I.
Twenty-two was important to me. As a trustee, where do you see your primary purpose or primary role, both as an individual trustee and as a member of a governing board?
Which is like number two. You see as the primary world of, role of a trustee?
Yep.
So, that role, both individually and as a member. It's similar to number six of the application, what is the role of the governing board in the fulfillment of the purpose of public schools? But I, I don't know if you think it's, he wants enough to be.
I, yeah, I think it needs to be different, because I think that a board, a, a board's responsibilities are one thing, but I want to know what that trustee's, what they feel their responsibility is.
Do you like two, or?
I did some.
Or twenty-two?
Or, no.
It was twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
You were twenty-two better. Some version of both.
Doesn't matter. I, I kind of like twenty-two.
Same thing.
Twenty-two, would you give up two for twenty-two?
Did he say two?
Yeah, he did.
Oh, I'm.
Oh, I thought you said.
He said nine.
Oh.
Nine and twenty-three.
Shins, I thought you.
Yeah.
For two, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Got it, got it.
Okay.
I circled them.
Alright, so right now, looking at this, you guys, we have number five. We have number seven. We have number nine. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Sixteen. Nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-seven. So, from what I'm gathering, twenty-seven, for sure, we all want.
Yes.
This is your opportunity for closing statements, is there anything else that you would like to share with us about yourself?
Yes.
That's a for sure. Um, number seven was a first, it sounded like we kind of all went, but it was Ruthie's, your revision to that one, adding in the core value piece.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So, then it would be something like.
Value.
Something like.
What are your top core values, and how would you make decisions when considering your own values, the community's concerns, student needs, state and federal law, and staff recommendations, especially if there's conflict or tension between them?
That good, you guys?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah? Okay, and then number nine.
We have us chose nine.
Mm-hmm, what do you see as the strengths of our Fullerton School District, and what?
What do you see as our biggest challenges or areas of improvement? What are your ideas to address our challenges?
Is that good as-is?
Mm-hmm.
There's just a typo, I did it.
That's why I couldn't.
Yeah, there's, it's, and what do you see?
Yeah.
It's an additional hour.
Not out.
Right, that's.
Yeah.
Wasn't thinking, okay. So, number nine. Is it good, okay, so then if we look down to, oh, hold on, we had, um, it seemed like there was more consensus on.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, it looked like a couple people were twenty-three.
Both, yeah, James and I.
Although.
We.
Twenty-three.
Substituted seven.
Yep, seven, could be part of, is twenty-three, oh, no, twenty-three is identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about, and describe how you would balance, community concerns, student needs, state, state and federal law, staff considerations. That's like.
Getting at the same thing, it's just the question is, do you preface it with talking about your core values or a recent board decision?
And, and you get, I think you get two different things. You know, if you're talking about identify a board decision, that way, that, that means that somebody has been paying attention. What we're doing. And might say, oh, I didn't, you know, you guys voted for this, and I think that was a great idea. I mean, it doesn't have to be something that they didn't feel good about. But I mean, I think that gives that opportunity for someone to say, yes, I have been paying attention. You know, or do we? Or do we care at that point?
We definitely care. That they've been paying attention, sorry, James. I mean.
I'm, I'm with you, my preference is that they identify a particular vote, whether they liked it or not.
You think people are going to go against us?
They don't have to be, it doesn't have to be bad.
I mean, I just don't want them to say, oh, everything you do is great, and, and not really have a meaningful conversation out of it.
I hope they don't. I hope they have their own opinion.
Question mark. Question mark.
I mean, we do want to know what they think about it. We want each of us to have our own opinion on things, and that's why we do everything here on the dais.
Well, we're asking, and we're saying, describe how you would, so they're taking a look at what is, what, what.
How you balance.
About?
Yeah.
And how they would be thinking, so it kind of talks about, oh, I would, you know, be thinking about this, or I would, you know.
I mean, they, they can agree with us and say, you know, I think that you did.
You guys rocked.
I would have done, I would have done this, or I would have said this, or, you know.
We're sorry we're putting you guys all through this, but this is the only time we could do this. This is how it has to be done, sorry.
We try to do it in the back room.
If you guys are listening, now you know if you really want to do this or not.
If we, if we are.
I know you guys are.
Got all the teachers right here.
No, they say something so bad, I know they do, but they.
Do you want to beat them over, cross out the ones that are the same?
Okay. One, two, three, four, so so far we have four.
Okay, we have one, two, yeah. Well, I don't know, we put a question mark on twenty-three. We had seven, nine, twenty-seven, for sure, and then we, didn't we just put a question mark on twenty-three?
We did.
Okay, so then we have three.
Let's keep going and see if we need to bring that one back. Qualifications, what qual, what qualities and qualifications do you think are most important in selecting a new superintendent to lead our school district? You guys feel that one?
Yes.
We all agree on that one? Yep.
Yes. We skipped number eleven.
Okay.
Well, or maybe you're going with consensus.
I was kind of going with the ones that I thought people were.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To do, and then, I was going, saving the harder ones for after the end. How about, you know, again, I think what we're trying to find out is how people, not how people think, but how that, where, where their decision-making is, right? And how they, what they believe, and how they come to their decisions. So I think that when you're talking about.
I think number nineteen is important. Because you really have to be up to date and know your demographic, and know what the schools in your area need. So I think number nineteen is important.
I'm o, I'm okay with that, but I go back to my, my thing about schools and voting districts. Because I truly believe you're voted in by an area, but your schools are all schools. I, I truly don't feel like the schools that are in the area that votes for me.
And that makes sense, and that makes sense, but you also have to take into consideration that I don't go to the schools that James necessarily was voted in, not because I don't want to, but because sometime, but sometimes because I don't go to their PTA meetings, or sometimes to their events, only because there are, the schools in my district have asked me to go and participate with, with them. And so it's not always possible to be at every single district. But you do also, when elections come, that is the area that is, that he's going to be representing. So I think it's also important, even though we represent every single school and every single student in the district, it's also important to know the schools in your area, and to be able to have that, you know, one-on-one. So I agree with you a hundred percent, but I also think you have to.
I think you shouldn't put your community.
Yes.
Your area, but I also think that all the schools are all our schools. And, you know, that's just my, my philosophy, I don't, and I really want, you know, as you come in, our, we have open enrollment, right? Our, our parents are going everywhere. So just because that school is, and then, and then you have districts where our boundaries that, you know, are across the line. I mean, I don't know if, I, and I think we get into the whole, what's the word that I'm looking for? I mean, I, I truly believe as a school board member, your job is to be voted in by a certain area. That's a community that you should know, that's a community that votes you in, but your schools are, are all schools. And so I'm just going back to this question, and that's the only reason I'm bringing it up, because it says, stay up to date on issues affecting the area and schools you represent. I would want to say affecting the area you represent.
Madam President, I mean, I think we have consensus on a five question so far, right? So maybe one option could be that each trustee selects his or own question that might unnecessarily have consensus, but we have the majority of questions that have consensus. And then each trustee can ask the same question that is of particular interest to him or her.
But we got to make sure that we're not asking the same.
Right, right, so let's just, we could de-conflict that here, but that way we don't have to try to get consensus on every single question, because there might not be one.
We'll get it. One, two, three, right now we have five, you said? Four, for sure.
We have four.
Okay.
One, two, three, we have seven, nine, twelve, twenty-seven.
Okay, so.
There's a question mark on twenty-three.
So each one of us pick one. Is that what you're saying, pick one more to add to?
Uh, one more, yes, ma'am.
All right.
There's four.
So Vanessa, which is your next, which, which one do you want on there? You want to go back to nineteen? Or you pick?
I had originally picked both thirteen and nineteen.
Which one do you want? Because I think thirteen and nineteen were, I think Ruthie had to, maybe even.
I'm going to do nineteen.
Okay. We're all okay with nineteen?
I'm okay with nineteen, I think you could also just make it a bit more neutral, and saying, how do you represent the community? How do you learn to represent the community? Stay up to date on issues affecting the community you represent? And then you would, a person would reveal their philosophy in sharing their response, right? They might say, I'm going to go to every PTA of the three schools I represent. Or they might say, I'm going to go to every school I can and represent them all, you know. You would learn a lot if it was made more general.
Good idea.
Well, it does say generally.
Right.
At the end.
Saying just cross out.
Yeah.
That's all I was saying.
Stay up to date on issues affecting the area you represent.
The district specifically, and public education generally.
Yeah, the question is, how do you know to make informed, good decisions? And we'll learn what people think.
James, which, add one more, which one?
Uh, so is twenty-three on, did it make the cut? I think there was a.
Put it back in? Oh.
I liked.
Similar to seven. So if, if you want to have a conversation about recent board decisions, I think we can do that, it's just then, do we want to single out the values and bring them back in another way? Do you want the board decision?
My preference would be the board decision.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
So then we can go back into how do you tell their core values?
Which is similar to. It's similar to thirteen, we could make it work there, like, what are your core values? And if those come into conflict with, you know, and state, local, and federal government sometimes come into conflict, how would you balance these or, or navigate these tensions?
Perfect.
Thirteen was on my list, so I like thirty.
We'll combine, take away seven, and combine thirteen with core values.
So now we have.
We have nine.
Seven, we have one more.
Or five, six?
Right?
I see six.
I have, okay, I have, you guys, I've got nine.
Ruthie, did you say two, take away seven?
Excuse me?
Yeah, we're taking, have seven.
Right, we have nine, twelve, we have thirteen with added a little bit of core value thing in there. We have nineteen, we have twenty-two, we have twenty-three, and we have twenty-seven. That's seven?
One, two, four.
Twenty-two?
Six, seven, yeah, Bev wanted twenty-two.
Okay, that was the one you wanted, yeah, got it.
So one, so we need one more?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, we need one more.
Either the ones left are eleven or sixteen are the ones that I was. What do you want to accomplish?
What does?
And what strengths do you bring?
How about, what does it mean to put students first? We didn't ask that on the application anywhere, right? That's nowhere.
No.
I'd support that, open-ended.
Which one?
For, what does it mean to you to put students first?
Number twenty.
Number twenty. I mean, I, I personally like that one. I would like that one. We are student-centered. So that's number eight. All right, so are we okay, you guys?
I have one, I'm thinking about that. So the other, only other one that was missing was, I had suggested, what strengths, experience, and insights do you bring to make our board better?
And we don't have that on our.
Well, they list their experiences. I think it'd be interesting to hear an assessment of how they think they bring something different to our board.
Well, wouldn't that be? Don't you think that they could cover that in nine, when they talk about their ideas to address, how, how would they, what are their ideas to address our challenges? But they're, well, maybe not, what they're bringing.
Doesn't mean they have personal strengths that they bring to address those challenges.
Adding it would be the ninth question, is that right?
Or could we add that to something?
Yeah, so nine.
Something already that we could bring that.
You could add it to the final closer question, number twenty-seven.
To include.
Yeah.
Like, why would we want you on the board? How's it going to make us better?
To include your strengths, or.
I think there's something really powerful about having diversity on our board that brings different experiences and qualities, right? And so I think that's part of what we're looking for, is someone who's going to bring something that makes us better. So, yeah, I think.
Add that to that, okay, so we're going to add that piece, what question was that?
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Was seven?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, but then what was the part that, what was the question, Ruthie, that you?
It's on sixteen.
So what strengths, experience, and insights will you bring to the board to make us better? And where's that? Number sixteen.
Number sixteen.
So do you want to add that first? What strengths, experiences, and insights would you bring to, to make us better?
So what we would.
And then kind of say, this is your opportunity.
Right.
Anything else you want to add?
Or this is your opportunity to include.
To include.
So put sixteen into that one.
Yeah.
Okay. You have all the notes, I think we got it.
Count between you and I and Anna.
We'll have it.
Okay, perfect. That's eight. Do we want to assign them now, or do we want to wait?
We have, oh, look at Anna, I didn't even.
We need a lottery?
Look at this.
Oh, wow, look!
You did. We were two.
Give that to Ruthie, she'll doctor it up for you.
I'll, I'll share the.
Okay, so we should assign, should we assign right now?
Sure, or you can do the lottery the same day, like you did with speaking order.
Yeah.
It'll be a surprise!
Are we going to be faithful to read the questions as is and not?
We have to. We have special. We all have to do, okay.
Okay.
No ad libbing? No, can you clarify that, just so that you can get more information? No, we're not doing that. If they blow it and answer the wrong question, because they had it written down the wrong way, they're just going to blow it.
I know.
And I'm going to gavel them. Out of here!
She's going to take her job very seriously.
I'm only president for a couple more months, okay? Then you won't have to deal with this anymore. Okay, all right, so we're good, so we didn't decide if we're going to assign or what.
I think we can go through them if, if Anna's able, or we can.
Probably just one, two, three, four, you know, the back.
How about if there's anyone?
Does anyone have a love for a question that you guys want to assign?
I think we can just put them together and.
Okay, we're just going to sign them that night. Or, or beforehand, we'll, we'll make the assignments before.
Yeah.
But it'll be a surprise to everybody else.
Surprise!
That we could keep, we don't have to do that in the public, do we?
We just have to pick the questions.
Do we have to tell who is doing what question in the public? Like, right now, do we have to do that?
The only thing you can't do is continue to have this conversation among the, a quorum after this meeting.
Okay.
If you delegate someone the authority, like.
I'm going to assign them.
To assign.
Perfect.
Then you're fine.
Good, I've got it.
We're fine. Okay.
Perfect, okay. Okay. What do you guys think? Do you think we've covered everything we're supposed to cover?
Okay, so one thing you need to add is, if you are going to change it, which it sounds like there was some consensus, so that you pick the same night, as opposed to November, that is a change from the direction that you gave at the last meeting. So if you're going to do that, just do that officially, and Mary, do you have any advice for how that's done?
If you adopted a process at your last meeting, just make a motion to slightly modify the process in order to do whatever it is that.
In the minutes, it does have, in the minutes, it does talk about, I think there was some confusion, but at the minutes you were talking about, at one point, that it would be brought up in the November meeting and voted on, so just at this point, if you could clarify, it'll be great. The minutes were, we got.
I think our minutes.
Different things.
And the minutes that we approved this evening were, it says, that a special board meeting will be held on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, to interview applicants and make an appointment. That's all it says, so let's make it clear tonight. So I'm going to entertain a motion that we will interview and appoint the same evening.
Okay, it sounded like, it's.
But we're just going to clarify it.
But you have, what you had already done, I do, I do, it sounded like that's already clear from the minutes.
I will say at the last meet, we went back through it, there's, there are spots where, in the video, where it's.
And it's not clear.
It's not clear, so just if you do it.
We were rambling.
Yeah, just clarify it now, this is really a discussion item on, oh, you know, it's his appointment process.
Yeah, 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 no, we made sure we had it on there.
So moved.
We're just going to do the swearing-in in November, in the November meeting.
Yes. So, so it's been moved? And do we have a second? And seconded that we interview and actually deliberate and make a choice that evening?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Sounds like you have a plan.
We have a.
We're good?
And I, I just, we'll take a few minutes between each candidate to write notes. We won't deliberate at that point, but we'll just be able to have a few minutes to write down our thoughts before the next person comes.
Just for clarification, I'll be timekeeper, do you, approximately how many minutes between candidates? Just so I can.
Yeah.
Kind of keep time and keep, and we want to make sure we get staff to be able to bring the next person in.
I'd say three to five.
Three to five.
Five minutes in between each one.
So minimum of three, kind of check for however.
We can adjust if we're finding.
If everyone's written enough, right. Yeah, we just don't want to have to come to the end and say, oh, my gosh, who said that?
Yeah. And I think if we're thinking about who are our top two, we can sort of have a continuous, like, up and down ranking of like, this person moved to the top, this person, and then got replaced, but, so knowing that that's towards our goal at the end, when we start deliberations, that we would start with our top two.
Yep. We're good?
Yes.
We beat it as much as we can?
Okay.
Thank you so much for your help on that, we appreciate it, thank you, everybody, for your patience. Hope you enjoyed that little bit of chatting amongst ourselves. Okay, we are now on item D. Oh, okay, this was a discussion on protocols to agendaize items by the board trustees. I added this just as a part of our ongoing effort to ensure efficiency and respect for all of our staff time. And as we talked in our protocol meeting, I wanted, as I was looking at it, I wanted to propose an additional step to our process for placing items on future agendas. Currently, right now, when we do it, the item requires a second to be added, and before. And before a second is made, I'd like us to consider, first consider whether the information being requested could be provided through an internal communication, so, and that's what we do now, right? It's like, when we bring it up, they ask, should it be a communique, or does it need to be a board item? Right, so as that first is there, having that conversation, additionally, I'm proposing that staff have the opportunity to provide brief input prior to a second. Specifically, how much time it would take, how much time would be required for research and to prepare the item for board consideration. This will help us make more informed decisions about which topics warrant placement on future agenda and align with our August protocol meeting agreement to be mindful of the number of staff requests that we're making. I'm just, I'm thinking that it will bring transparency and better manage the workloads and assure our agenda reflects our highest priorities. I think as we're, as we make a motion, I want, I want the, I'm really interested in this one subject. And I bring it up and I ask for a second, usually we're pretty polite on saying, yeah, you know, if you want it, then I'm gonna support you in most cases. Before we second it, I just want to hear from staff, well, how long is that gonna take? Right, so before I second something, I want to know, is it gonna take just 10 minutes? Is it gonna take five days to put the item on? And once they, and we'll still vote on it, but I just want us to have all the information before we move forward with new items and new agendas, and if in fact it could be on a communique or if it's. So it's our existing protocol, it's just adding in that step where staff will say, yes, you know, and I'm sure they're not gonna have exactly the amount, but they'll know, oh, it's gonna take, you know, that, oh, that's easy. We can, you know, that'll take us a half an hour to research and put on. And it would be better through, you know, communique, or, and we're doing that now. But I just think that as we're going through this and as we start to bring new people on who may have ideas about adding more things, because we're new board members, I just want to make sure that we're fine-tuning that process so that our staff are using their time wisely. And we're not just, you know, that, that we really, when we make that decision and second it, that we've made the right decision and we've had a well-informed, we know what we're doing. So that's the only thing I'm asking that we consider doing moving forward. I don't think it would change anything, but I just think it gives staff that opportunity to tell us what it entails.
Shall we second that?
We can, should I make a motion? Can I make a motion as the president?
At this point, it's a discussion, so if you want, you just bring it back.
No, we can, we, no, yeah.
Is it an action?
Yeah, we could do an action. We can, we can say, well, think about it, bring it back, or we can.
It's, right now, it's listed as a discussion, but.
Okay.
We can just bring it back the next time as an action item, and then you just vote on it.
Okay.
Do you think it would be best practice then for us, if we know we're gonna request something, to ask staff, like, give a heads-up to say, I'm gonna ask for this topic to be discussed, possibly put on the agenda, could you come prepared to tell us how much time it might take or what that will be requiring? Because I think, I mean, obviously, there are moments, there have been times I've been up here and I thought, oh, we need to follow this up. Can you do that? But then there are other times where you know I'm coming into this meeting and I'm gonna ask about this going forward.
I don't, I don't want to stifle us either from doing that. I want, you know, we're board members and we want to know things and we should be able to. But I also don't want, you know, I find myself sometimes making a decision, it's like, well, I don't know how much time that's gonna take. And if it's really gonna take 40 hours, is that something I really, you know, so, but I think, yes, I think we do that anyway. I think that if we know we're gonna ask for something, I think in the past, we've kind of brought it up and warned people. My question to staff is, if we, so say we bring up something, can you give us a ballpark if you thought about it for two minutes on, oh, that's pretty easy? Or no, that's pretty complicated, or that's gonna take my staff 40 hours to do?
Sure, yeah, generally, we know a rough estimate.
Because there's been things we've asked and it's taken 40 hours to do.
And we could tell you additionally, how many staff members would be involved? So if it, if it's across department, we may have to be able to mention that as well. It just wouldn't be one department, it may be.
And that's not saying we're not gonna second it. I mean, well, but at least that we know what we're asking. That's all I was trying to.
And I think you, you have talked about this, and it's one, just to continue, which is, we definitely have months, sometimes, where we have packed agendas, like, there, and so in some cases, if the item's willing to put off for a few months, because, I mean, as an example, November is pretty slammed, as an example, December should be pretty full. So in some cases, let's say it is 20 hours, and if it's not pressing, then, you know, and there's flexibility to say, hey, you know, can we move it six months? That can be helpful, too.
I think if anything, I would feel encouraged to maybe ask more often if I knew how much time things are. Because sometimes I'm afraid, well, if I ask this, it might be a lot of work. So it is helpful sometimes to know, and if it's like, oh, it's just two hours and then we get an answer, then I'm gonna ask.
So since it says, it says discussion on the, over here, but it says discussion on the agenda. So should we just table it or add it to the, should, can I request that it go on the next agenda? Can I have a second?
Yes.
I'm happy to move to incorporate that as part of our board practice. I think it's, the way I see it, it's a formalization of the consultation that we do with Bob at the DIAS already. And I'm happy to make that motion.
It'll take all of like five minutes. It actually'll take Anna, Anna, what, 10 minutes? No, add it to the agenda.
Add it to the agenda.
Added it.
Took a few seconds. Add something else to the.
It takes her 10.
It's under discussion, action, but it says discussion.
Okay, all right.
So, we'll just, and that can go under, you guys are okay with it just going into consent? As opposed to discussion for next one?
Sure.
Next meeting?
Yeah, that can be consent.
Yes, I second that.
We all agree.
Yeah, sure.
Aye. It's Mulan.
I know, okay, we'll put it into consent, so that way it's not.
We don't need a discussion again.
Okay, we're moving along. Oh, discussion on our superintendent search. I'm, for every meeting now, we're gonna agendize our superintendent search. So that way, if we have new information or if we need to talk about it, we have the ability to do that. And so I put this on here just so that we let our public know that we have directed our district to, to move forward with asking for requests for quotes for superintendent search firms, feeling like we, as a board, want to make sure that we're looking at all candidates, and that we open that up to anyone that feels like they would like to apply. And so right now, we are in the request for quote process. We will be getting proposals back from search firms over the next week. We, as a board, have identified an ad hoc committee who will then look at, along with staff, look at all the proposals for the search firms, and we will narrow it down to whatever our top three, four are, two, depending on what we have. We will then invite search firms to our November meeting to make a quick presentation on what they can offer us, because each search firm has a different flavor. And then from there, we will select a search firm that, at night, and then we will move forward fast. And as Ruthie had mentioned earlier in her report, we plan to have the process done by spring. We will encourage dialogue with all of our stu, all of our groups, all of our associations, our community members, our parent groups, staff. In the past, I see, you know, I've done this a couple of times, and in the past, what we've done is opened up the comments on what are you looking for in a superintendent, to staff members, to parents, to community members. And so what we'll do as a board is give our search firm a list of these are people and groups and organizations that you need to address. They'll go out asking for feedback, so staff can, instead of telling us what you're looking for and encouraging us, we will ask that you go to the search firm and talk directly to them and not to us, because again, we're gonna have to interview, and we're gonna go through a process. And so they will go through that, they'll come up with a long list of things, we'll add our stuff, and then we'll move forward on opening it up and actively recruiting for someone who fits the bill, what we're looking for. As a board, then we will go, you know, they'll narrow it down, we'll have, you know, so many interviews, depending on how many qualified people apply, and then we'll go through that process. That is the one thing that as a school board, that's our one responsibility that we have total autonomy over, meaning that we will do that in closed session, and that we don't have to do that in the open session. So we will do all of our interviews, everything will be confidential, we'll do our deliberations, and that will be one thing that we, we don't have to do like this. And so we hope to finish that process by April. We're very sad that we have to do it. We're not gonna go there yet. But, but know that this board, this board is focused on making sure that we do the right thing for our school district, for our students, for our staff, for our community. And we do plan to bring everybody into that process, but, but know that we're, that we're on it and we're taking this very seriously, and that we are, we're strong. That's my, my, I think. Do you guys have anything to add about the superintendent search on that one?
I just was thinking about how I'm grateful the way Dr. Bob has led our district and that, I think we're such a great. I don't know who wouldn't want to come work for us, because we have great kids, great, I mean, amazing scores and awards and things like that, but great relationships with our labor, our staff, and I think we like each other, we function as a board. And I really hope that that encourages a lot of folks to apply, because it's a great place to live and work here.
One of the questions that I received was from one of our community, community organizations, and they wanted to know if they would be able to take part in the, like, have their opinion be taken. So for example, the Richmond Community Center, would they be a group that we inter, you know, we interview to ask, what would you look at, what are you looking for in a superintendent?
Yeah, I believe that they've always had a place in that, I mean, in the past.
Okay.
That was one of the groups that's on that list, that we, as a board, we.
Because I know we talked about.
We.
Teachers and staff.
No, no.
You know, our PTA.
Absolutely.
But.
Absolutely, I, I think it would be, absolutely, anyone that.
I think it would be important.
Anyone that we feel is who we work with. So I, I think as a board, we give our list to our search firm. Our search firm works for us, so if, in fact, we feel like that's the right people, yeah, absolutely. Any community, any community group that I think works with our school district is a group that will be there. And, and I think, and we've opened it up in the past, you know, go onto this and fill out this Google form. I mean, we've, we'll make it very, very.
Something, yeah.
Yep.
But they, we can let them know. Sorry, I laughed because the fly went from attacking me to attacking Jane.
Took on his hair. They, they can't interview, they can't interview and be in the interview, but they certainly can meet with our search firm and say what they want in a superintendent, absolutely. I think, I think we're done with item E. Now we're on to admin reports. Dr. Hammett, come on up.
Yes, this item isn't an action item, but just for administrative report. This is CSEA's initial bargaining proposal presented for the public to put on our agenda in case the public wanted to come and comment on CSA's initial proposal. Once this meeting is over tonight, this will allow us to initiate formal negotiations with CSEA.
Any questions for? We're way, we're done way before I thought we were gonna be done. Board member, board member request for future items?
How much time will it take?
I just wanted to let the public know, because I, we were told as trustees in our communique that coming up in December, on our board meeting in December, there will be a conversation about the encore expansion. So that, so I'm not requesting it, because it's already planned to be in December, but at our December board meeting, we'll talk about expansion of encore program in January 2026, which means a lot more kids are gonna be having free after-school care. We're expanding to all of our K through six. And then we will discuss the possibility of additionally adding in our programs for seventh and eighth graders at Parks, Whistler, and Beachwood. Talk about what that cost would be to the district, as well as concerns and conversation about how to balance sharing our fields and spaces with the community during those extended hours where school is continuing to happen until 6:00 PM. So I know folks have reached out to us and wondered about those conversations. I would say they are not finalized. We are moving with the recommendations and the support of our staff to do what we think is best for kids, but there, it is an ongoing conversation that will be more elaborated upon in December at our board meeting.
I found it very helpful that you guys listed the few months on what's happened, and I think Anna's also.
That was very nice, thank you, Anna.
Working on the governance calendar for the rest of the year so that we know where things are as we move forward in the next calendar year, so thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing, seeing nothing, we're going to go ahead and, oh, hold on. Don't leave yet, I have another page. It was just a teaser. We have a special board meeting, I just have to announce, a special board meeting scheduled on Wednesday, October 29th at 5:00 PM. That's open to the public to interview for the Area 1 trustee vacancy. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 18. On that note, our meeting is adjourned, and good night, everybody.
Good night.